The meeting of the city council town of Atherton for October sixth. Four P M study session, regular agenda to order. And before we have, well, we'll do the roll call first, please, Anthony.
Certainly.
Come back. There you are. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Hawkins.
Here.
DeGolia?
Yes.
That's a member Woodmer.
Still here.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Lempers.
I'm here.
And Mayor Lewis.
I'm here also. So before we go into public comments, I do want to. Announcement. So if someone has their phone on. If it's okay, we did receive a letter from our Vice Mayor. Mike Lempers this week that he is resigning from council as of October fifteenth, I believe. And I wanted to give him a minute to kind of address the council and the public regarding that. Before we start our meeting, because that was kind of a surprise, but you know, I think it's all good for him. Mike?
Yeah, thank you. And it is from my perspective, you know, sad to be moving on from the council. You know, feel strongly about the town and feel strongly about the town's governance and feel like, you know, we've managed to accomplish a lot. And there's, there's a lot more to do. But I had sort of a special opportunity for my family that involved leaving the town for at least a little while. And basing ourselves out of Europe. And we just thought it was a once in a lifetime kind of thing. So. We're taking advantage of it. And the only real downside is, is that I'm stepping away from the council. But I'm confident the town is in good hands. So.
Thank you.
Thank, thank all of you, and particularly the town staff who's been wonderful for me for seven years.
Absolutely. So Mike, this is your last official council meeting. But I hope that you will log in on our October twentieth meeting so that we can honor your service properly. Okay?
Oh, well, I'd be, I'll be happy to do that, just as long as I don't have to sing. Everything's good.
All right. Okay. Well, we'll miss you a lot, but we'll do all that in October. Okay, so I didn't.
But I'd like to make a comment about that. I think.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I mean, this is a big deal. This has been an incredibly consistent council. Mike's been a remarkable member of this council. I think it's a big deal. We're, and I. I just want to say I'm really sorry to see you go, Mike. I, I hope you will come back and I hope you will run for the council again. We've been an incredibly consistent council and we've done a lot over these last eight years, I guess.
Okay, well, we're going to have more time in October because we.
I'm sure we will, but now's when it's been announced.
Thanks, Rick. I appreciate it. I do appreciate it. And I agree with you. There's been, it's, there's been a lot accomplished. In part because we've been consistent for, for a while. Yeah.
Really.
And collaborative.
Been collaborative. Absolutely.
Yeah.
Okay, moving on to item number two, public comments. Anthony, would you like to give the explanation, please?
I'd be happy to. So for any member of the public or anyone else joining the meeting that would like to make a comment during an item. You are welcome to use the participants button at the bottom of your screen and raise your hand if you're joining by Zoom link. If you happen to be joining by phone, you can dial star nine on your receiver. And that will give us the indication that you'd like to make a comment. And you're also welcome to use the chat feature. I don't know if anyone has a public comment that they'd like to make now for an item that is not on the agenda, but you're welcome to do so. And the mayor will also give you an opportunity during our, our items.
All right, seeing no public com, uh, public comments. We will go on to item number three, which is a report of our closed session and I'll give it over to City Attorney Mona Ibeemehemi.
Thank you, Mayor Lewis. The council did meet in close session, both on. An item to initiate litigation and as well as liability of claims. The council provided direction to staff on both of those items.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to item number four is to adopt a resolution ratifying the proclamation of a state of emergency. By Governor Gavin Newsom as of March fourth, twenty twenty. As applicable in the town and authorizing the teleconferencing meetings of legislative bodies. Of the town pursuant to the Ralph M. Brown Act. And George, do you want to make a comment here?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. This, this is a new thing under A B three sixty one. As you know, the, the governor's extension of the original provisions under his initial executive order expired on September thirtieth. So organizations, in order to continue to meet via Zoom like we are this evening and with council members at various different parts of the world. Need to every thirty days adopt a continuing resolution under A B three sixty one to allow us to do that. Pursuant to the state's declaration of emergency. We can meet in person. We don't have the facilities to be able to do that very well with Zoom technologically speaking. As well as from an emergency perspective and spacing everybody out in the room as required for small meetings. So adoption of this resolution allows us to continue that on a thirty day basis. We'd have to do this again. In another thirty days if we wish to continue to allow us to meet like we are tonight. It's recommended that we adopt the resolution this evening.
Thank you. So we don't have to do it again on October twentieth?
That's correct.
Okay, okay. So any member of the council have a question for City Manager regarding this? Mr. DeGolia?
Yeah, so one, what, what, what had been required under the Brown Act previously, as I understand it. Is that if a member of the council was going to be connected remotely like all of us are today. That we would have to post a notice. External to the facility where we would be and any member of the public could come in. And join that council member in his or her location. And the, the, in my opinion, the really enormous problem with that is. A safety problem for council members, particularly council women. Who would be forced to allow anyone from the public to come in and be in their home. If they were in their home or wherever else they may be. And I hope that that law will permanently be changed because I think it's wrong. I do, I just want to confirm that this law, that this emergency provision authorized by the governor. And that we would be adopting each month will make it such that we don't have to do that. That council members can meet remotely and don't have to post that notice. Is that correct?
Yes, yes. So I, I want to add one thing to what you were saying. Not only would we have to post a notice of the location where we're at, but for the agendas being produced and mailed out. We would have had to given that specific remote address. So that that would also be listed in the agenda.
Right.
Or went out, so.
So I just want to confirm that all of that.
Yeah.
Doesn't have to be complied with during the period that we adopt this on a thirty, on a monthly basis.
Exactly.
Correct.
Correct.
Yes.
And, and then finally, just a second question. Can we approve this on the consent calendar in each agenda? And if we can, if we can, wouldn't we want it to be on the regular agenda because we don't have a consent calendar on the study session?
We put this on the, I'm sorry, we put this on the study session to ensure that at the first available meeting, we can take action on this. Subsequent to this, the staff would prepare findings and as long as the council agreed with those findings to continue meeting remotely. You could approve it in your consent agenda item.
Right.
Because it would be on a thirty day notice.
Yeah.
Schedule. Nice. Good, good point there. All right. So I would like to guess, Councilmember Lempers.
No, just, just a, a point to throw in is relates to what George mentioned about our technology. One of the good things that has come out, I think of the, the last year and a half, has been increased public participation. Primarily because of Zoom and that kind of technology. So I think that whatever happens with this, I hope that the town continues to work to permit that in the future. And whatever we need to do, I think we should do because even if the council needs to come into council chambers and be together. It's great if people who, who aren't able to come into the council can participate from home.
Yeah, it's called live streaming, which we didn't have the technology for at our old.
I'm not sure we do at the new place, do we?
No, 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 we, I think we do in the council.
Yes.
There's not in the pavilion.
No, not, not in the pavilion. Okay, so all right, given any, any other comments? If not, I'd like to call for a motion to approve and adopt this resolution. Authorizing the remote teleconferencing of meetings of legislative bodies of the town pursuant to the Ralph and Brown Act.
So move.
Assembly Bill three six one.
I second it. Let's go.
Let her finish, let her finish.
Favor.
Hi.
Elizabeth.
Anthony.
Yes, Councilmember Hawkins.
Hi.
DeGolia?
Yes. Enthusiastically.
Thank you, Woodmer.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Lempers.
Hi.
Mayor Lewis.
Hi, okay. So going on into our study session items, item number five. We're looking at feedback and direction regarding a request for proposals for landscape maintenance services. And do we have our Public Works Director, Robert Avadia? Would you like to kick this off for us, please?
I can, unless you want George to do the preface. Nope. Okay, no problem. So tonight, we are seeking feedback and direction with regards to landscape maintenance services. We currently have an agreement with M C E to provide both facility. I say more than that, we have facility, street, storm drain and landscape maintenance services through an agreement with. M C E. With the addition of the town center, we are significantly increasing our landscaped area. And there are some specialty items within the. Within the town centers as we bring it on, we want to make sure that we provide the appropriate level of, of maintenance for those facilities that we are. Going to soon have. And so as we look to. Look to maintain, look to take on those maintenance services, we have a couple of, we have a few options in terms of how we're going to do that. One is, is that we can certainly work with M C E to extend our current agreement with them. To provide some additional staffing to take care of the additional area. We can issue a request for proposals solely for the town center area. Or we can look at a more comprehensive landscape maintenance services agreement. That includes not just the town center, but also includes Holbrook Palmer Park. And so those are three options. We've included in your staff report. Some advantages and disadvantages to each of those options, and I can certainly highlight those if you would like. But in addition to that, we have some general maintenance needs that have been outlined in the staff report for each area. And we are certainly open to input for increasing those. If we go with the third option, we'll have to clarify. And work to identify where the maintenance responsibility is for one contractor. Versus another would lie with regards to facilities versus the landscaping, landscaping and other services. And so with that, I'm open to answer any questions and looking forward to receiving some feedback from, from the council.
Okay. I just want to note that we did receive three written public comment. Communications, one from Jeremy Eisenberg, one from Susan Morconi, and one from Walt Robertson. And I think that Walt is here with us, but first I'd like to go to the city council. Members and ask them if they have any clarifying questions for Robert before opening up to public comment. Okay, seeing none. So everyone had received, has received the public comments. From those three people. Are there any other public members of the public who'd like to make a public comment at this time? About this item?
Mayor, with your permission, I'll just kind of briefly mention the rules. If, if you'd like to make a public comment, you have the options to click participants. Raise your hand if you're joining by phone, star nine as well, or you can send it directly through the chat feature. And so now would be an opportunity for you to do that.
Okay, seeing no public comment at this point, I'll bring it back to council for discussion and.
It looks like Mayor Matt Baker would like to make a public comment, so.
Oh, sure. Okay, Matt Baker. Hi, there you are.
Hi, Chair of the Parks and Rec Committee here. Had some little talk with Walt and our group and we would like to just. Encourage that we get more maintenance and more landscape services for the park. To further cut down trees, maintain the park, and we just don't want to share our resources with anyone.
Okay. All right, thank you. Okay, members of the council, discussion on this. Mr. Woodmer?
Sure. First off, I, I think that while M C E has, has done their best. I think having a professional landscape contract for, for the park, I think is, is important. You know, I point out and, and, you know, Jeremy did a super job on that, but. You know, I've taken both Robert and, and George through the event garden, you know, that. Out of private funds raised by both the dames and the, and the park foundation. You know, there was over three hundred, close to three hundred thousand dollars worth of work in that park. And, and essentially, it's kind of gone for, for naught. Now, it's not a hundred percent lost. But it is in very, very bad shape. And at this point in time, since we've done it, it should be actually be a beautiful setting. And it's not. And so, and there are other parts of the park. And as we continue to beautify the park, because we're going to be spending more and more money this year specifically on the park. I think it needs to be, we need to put the effort in to properly maintain it. So I would think that we would, you know, would be in, in our best interest to, to have a joint contract. That covers both locations and put that in the proposal. They can bid it separately. And if we have to carve something out later, we can do that, but, but I think it's, it's prudent on us to, to do our best for that park. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Woodmer. That's really good. Okay, anyone else? Rick, you had your hand up. Yes.
Yeah, yeah, I'd like to make a couple of comments.
Okay.
First, in terms of the staff report, the background focused on the fact that we are nearing completion. Of our town center project and given the way that we've restructured that parcel. That will create a significant amount of green space that we didn't previously have and that that space will need to be taken care of. And I fully agree with that. I think the background ignored a comment that I think is a very valid comment. That the Park and Rec Committee has made very clear on many, many occasions, which is that the park hasn't been. Hasn't had the investment in its maintenance that it has needed to be well maintained. And, and I think both are important. I do think that the guys especially Rob with M C E have been wonderful in the park over the last year. I've gotten many comments from people that have appreciated their friendliness and their contact. And their willingness to help people in the park, not just residents, but anyone in the park who needed help. And, and, and to fix any kind of a problem that was identified. These guys have really stepped up. And I believe that they're very strongly in support of the town. So making a move to go to option three, which I strongly support. I want to make sure that this doesn't adversely impact. The two guys that have been working in the park and that have been so supportive of the town. I don't know if that means that maybe one of them would come over and work on the landscaping in the park. I think that's not their area of real expertise. And, and I'm aware that they would continue to manage and take care of the buildings in the park. So I think what Robert raised in terms of being, creating clear lines of demarcation is probably very important. And we can do that in the R F P. But I think, I, I would. Recommend not bidding the town center parcel and the park separately. I think we need one firm to come in and really take care of this open space. These are the only two real publicly owned open spaces that we have in Atherton. Previously, the space in what is now going to be the town center was kind of odd. It was this little park we called Reading Park. But it's now going to be quite a big open space between these buildings and, and incorporating what had been Reading Park. So I, I feel great about the design and about the increase in the open space that we've generated with the new town center. And I think we should have one firm manage both of them and it should be somebody that knows how to properly take care of landscaping. And for whom that's their expertise. I wasn't, I wasn't suggesting that we have, we have two different firms. No, I, I, I thought you just suggested that we might separate the bidding in some way. And I'm not a hundred percent opposed to that. I just, my gut tells me it'd be better just to have it be one deal. I'm saying if they, if they bid each section separately in the one proposal. Then we could see how much to attribute to the park and how much to attribute to Pacific Center. I think that's reasonable because we, we try to cover those expenses in the park as much as we can. From the park rentals and the, and the park usage. And if in fact the park gets improved, we're, we're going to have more demand for the park than we have had. So I, I, that, that makes sense.
Okay, Diana, you want to weigh in on this?
I agree with getting a bid for the combined, the number three option.
Good, okay. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, that's, I, I agree with that. I, I think for all the reasons that Bill and Rick and then Diana said. One thing I'd add is it feels to me, and I'm not an expert in this stuff, but that we, we are entering a period where we're going to have some. Some fine gardening work that's going to be some fine, you know, maintenance works, maintenance work that's going to be done. And it's not going to be. It may require a slightly different skill set than we've had in the past. And so I hope that as we, as we go out to bid, that we're very thoughtful about how we do that.
Okay. So City Manager, do you want to make a comment before I make my comment?
Uh, yeah, just one thing to clarify the separation of the bits. We actually have three separate buckets with which to itemize out. Not only the general fund on the city hall portion of the project, but the park revenue that comes in from there. But also the library section of the town center. So itemizing those out into three separate buckets will be important as we get the bits back.
That's a, that's a very good clarification. But I have to agree that we really need one contractor. That will oversee and answer to all. And I know that it, the last few years, the park has really deteriorated. Quite a lot. And all the work that went into the event garden, all that the foundation had. Invested in, and when they turned it over to the town in twenty sixteen. And I know in twenty sixteen, we, we were actually putting money into, adding money to. The park maintenance and we hired a special gardener that would master gardener. To kind of oversee it all. That just didn't really go so well because he was not part of that. Contractor. I mean, our M C E group, he was an outside guy and so. But now we have an opportunity, I think, to really step up our game. And plus what happened is the council, if we, you remember. Back in, you know, twenty seventeen, when we, eighteen, nineteen, when we started the town center. We consciously reduced the amount of money that we were putting into park maintenance. Because we were uncertain as to how we were going to finance the new town center. And now that we've got, you know, all that taken care of, it's time to really, you know, sharpen. Our focus and make the event garden and all the other areas of the park. As beautiful as possible. And our town center is going to need a lot of special care. And the library, but we do have those buckets to dip into to pay, pay for it. So I agree with everyone else. How's that sound? Any other comments? Okay, do you have enough direction, Robert Avadia?
Yes, I believe I do.
Thank you so much. Okay, well, we'll move on to another one of your. Projects, not that you don't have enough to do, huh? But I'm really glad to see this come back to us because it's been, you know, a year or so. And item number six is the Neighborhood Traffic Management Action Plan. And Robert, you want to take this or George, do you, you guys?
I'm happy to.
It's going to be.
Okay, Robert, good.
Okay, so I'm hopefully sharing my screen. We have a presentation tonight. So with me tonight, this afternoon, I have a couple of members of our consultant team from T J K M. That's Ruta Girawala and Ria Debneff with us. And so I'm going to start the presentation and provide some context. And open it up to them to go through some of the specific measures and feedback that we've received from the Transportation Committee. With the intent of getting feedback from you, the council, tonight on. The potential mitigation measures that we would outline in our Neighborhood Traffic Management Action Plan. So just a reminder of some of the project goals and objectives. You know, we were to reach out to our residents to get feedback and input regarding traffic, safety and mobility concerns in town. Try and identify potential measures to address those concerns. And once we did that, to solicit community feedback on the measures to see what our community would be supportive of. And in taking that input and feeding it through our Transportation Committee and through the council. To develop a Neighborhood Traffic Management Action Plan to implement the measures. Predominantly through our capital improvement program. And so the purpose of tonight's meet, of today's meeting is to report on that second phase of public outreach. Wherein we presented an opportunity to our residents to provide feedback on not just the type of measures. But some potential locations. We have received some feedback on that. Will be reporting on the feedback that we received from the Transportation Committee on the potential measures. And then we're looking to get direction from you on the measures to be included. In the Neighborhood Traffic Management Action Plan. I'll also highlight a couple of pilot projects or want to discuss if there's some real quick measures that we want to push out. Right now, we have some money in our C I P allocated to implementing some quick, quick turn measures. And so just again highlighting kind of the process and the timeline. We started the project in. Last year with review of the existing conditions, gathering input and feedback from our residents. With regards to concerns. We've summarized, we summarized that at the end of last year and presented to both the Transportation Committee and the council. Developed some potential mitigation measures as alternatives for addressing those areas of concern. And solicited feedback from the community as well as the Transportation Committee. And now we're at kind of the tail end where we're having this conversation with you. And hopefully receiving some direction on the type of measures and locations that you want to see those at. And so just to highlight the level of input on the outreach sessions, we did have two virtual meetings. In this second phase of public outreach with about eighteen attendees at each session. But we did get a lot of input through our interactive. And online mapping system. And so our website had through about three hundred, a little over three hundred. Unique visitors, over a hundred people participated in the online survey. And we had over fifteen hundred responses on. And we had over fifteen hundred responses on the interactive map and the individual measures that um that we had uh proposed as some potential, potential measures to address the concerns that were raised. And in that second phase of outreach, we did get um feedback from residents all over town. Um, and so the map on the upper left corner indicates where we received responses from. Um, forty-one percent of the respondents didn't tell us where they lived. But um it's important to note that we received responses from each neighborhood. There were quite a number of people that participated for the first time in this second phase and didn't provide input during the first phase. Um, but those that did participate previously indicated that um they uh their main areas of concern were related to speeding, cut through traffic and related to bike and pedestrian activities. And so we asked some pointed questions just to try and get a sense of where our residents stood on some key issues. Um, of that um included, you know, with speeding being a primary area of concern, how would our residents like to deal with it? Or where do they think our priorities should lie? And so the feedback that we received on that was the first measure to mitigate speed would be additional enforcement. That would be followed by less intrusive measures such as additional speed feedback signs or additional um signage where we're warranted. Um, including some additional speed limit signs with speed lumps being kind of at the tail end of where preferences lied. The prioritization in terms of trade offs.
Robert, I'm sorry, could I interrupt for a second? I wanted to show we get a sense of what these bars are, what these numbers are. Can you tell us how to read this chart? Does this mean?
Sure. Um, so additional enforcement is basically the number one, got the most responses. And so the numbers one, two, three, four, just kind of indicate.
I'm referring, I'm sorry, I'm referring to this, the left axis, the Y axis. There's a fourteen responses, is that what they got?
Um, yes.
Okay. So even though we're ranking, I mean, the difference is only.
Uh, the differences are um I'm going to say they're nominal, the, the additional item that we did have is that we actually had a a ranking where people put things as first, second, third and fourth choice. And we have a different chart that's in your staff report that kind of outlined um outlined that. And so that is on page three of the staff report. Um, it showed the feedback there and it looks like the number on the axis, I apologize, does not appear to match the axis in the previous thing. So Ria, can you uh provide some clarity on that?
Uh, yes, so the number on the axis is actually the weighted average that was taken for all the answers.
So it's a weighted average as opposed to the number in terms of responses?
Just to provide some clarity on uh, you know, which uh uh option received like the most votes basically or uh receive the highest ranking.
Okay. Then similarly on um prioritization, um the feedback that we received was that it's most important to alleviate congestion and improve, improve traffic flow on our major routes uh to minimize impacts on our local streets. Um, that would be followed by deploying some traffic calming measures on the local streets to keep folks on those main, main routes. And then the last would be to decrease speeds on those main routes. Robert. Um, and then on a, on a side topic, we did have some potential measures that included some turn restrictions on uh from the side streets to El Camino Real. And we wanted to get a sense, a general sense of where um our residents felt about that. And there were um slightly more people that were okay with putting in those left turn restrictions from the side streets to El Camino Real, with the majority of those trying to limit those during um commute hours rather than all day.
Robert?
Yes.
Perhaps Ruda can also help with this one. Uh, I'm a little confused here. What's with the respect to the bar chart in the top left hand corner? What is the world of respondents there? That's, that's seventy-five, sixty-five and twenty, but surveys received were a hundred and fourteen. So perhaps you can explain what the world of respondents are there in terms of total number of respondents?
But this total number of surveys received and this particular graph is only for that hundred and fourteen respondents that, that were for the phase two.
I don't understand that.
We received a total of hundred and fourteen surveys. So this graph is just for those hundred and fourteen surveys that were received.
Yeah, I think the question is that there's.
Total number.
Wasn't a hundred and fourteen. Did folks have an opportunity to pick more than one?
Uh, I just wanted to clarify. Uh, so this is again a, a weighted average of the score that they provided. Uh, the answer.
Okay.
But, but there's a hundred and sixty responses and it's more, there, there's a hundred and forty yes or no. So it doesn't make, it's got to, doesn't make.
Yeah, they had to have done too.
Ria, have you averaged the responses? That's what their question is because on this Y graph, zero, two, four, six, eight, that's, that's kind of doubled averaged. Is that the, is that the case when you say weighted average?
I'm saying, I think it could be um. So basically the question was asked uh uh in a way that people provide scores to uh indicate their support, like um hundred is basically most support. And then as you go down to zero, which is the least support. So people had to provide a certain score is to, you know, to show the extent of their support. So that score was weighted into an average. It is not the number of participants.
Okay, okay.
So seventy-five percent of, of the people rated yes during commute hours, when you averaged all their responses, some people put a hundred, some people put twenty-five, et cetera. It averaged out, it was hundred and fourteen inputs, it averaged out to be seventy-five. Similarly, the sixty-five and the twenty.
That's correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Got it, thank you.
Okay. Um, and then just uh, you know, we did ask questions with regards to the need and desire for pedestrian improvements as well as bicycle facilities. Um, and so you can see here that there was um a, a large amount of response with regards to um agreement on the desire for both pedestrian and bicycle improvements in town. Um, when asked if there were any particular locations that they, that residents felt that we should be addressing, bicycle safety, um there weren't really um a significant number that picked any particular street. Um, it's just uh limited to a handful picking uh desired improvements um on uh mostly main routes in town. Uh, with regard, we also wanted to get a sense of where our residents felt in terms of if we were to put in pedestrian facilities, what type of surfacing uh they'd be supportive of. Um, the greater majority were favoring a decomposed granite or a softer looking facility. Um, that was followed by concrete, with a little bit behind that on asphalt uh with a number of folks not interested in walkway improvements at all. So. So at this point, what we're going to do is we're going to.
Oh, Robert, can you go back, please?
Sure.
So of all the respondents, because it looks like here pedestrian safety, bike safety, hi, you know, highly, you know, highly.
Highly desired, yeah.
Yeah, so are those numbers of people that responded? So it was like, what, twenty-seven, twenty-eight people said highly? Is that, is that what it is on, on pedestrian?
I have Ria nodding her head. So that's, this is, this is respondents as opposed to weighted averages, correct?
That's correct, this is the number of respondents.
Okay. All right. And, and so then the breakdown of the people that said, I highly agree or I agree, then they said what kind of uh material they wanted. The people that disagreed or strongly disagreed, they didn't bother doing that. Is that, is that also correct?
Ria?
Uh, yes, like, you know, uh, some people who uh like disagreed or strongly disagreed may have uh answered that they do not support walk improvement at all in the um in the next question, which is the preferred pedestrian facility.
And there may be some folks that did somewhat agree, but didn't really, though they agree that there are some pedestrian safety improvements, they may not have been supportive of, of walkway improvements.
Right, okay. All right, all right, good, all right, thank you very much.
Um, so at this point, we're going to transition to um series of maps. And I think the maps have been provided in your staff report with regards to a review of the potential, potential mitigation measures and the feedback that we received as well as the feedback that we, feedback and recommendations that we got from the Transportation Committee with the goal of getting um feedback and direction from the council on prioritized recommendations for inclusion in the Neighborhood Action Management, Neighborhood Traffic Management Action Plan. And so with this, I'm going to show a slide of some of the mitigation measures that were um were considered. On our website, we had detailed information with regards to various measures where um our residents could click on the measures and get additional information as to um traffic calming effects, potential negative impacts of each measure, et cetera. Um, but what I wanted uh Ria to do in term, Ria is going to be taking over from this point. But what I wanted her to do with this slide is kind of overview some of these measures so that there's an understanding of what they are and what was proposed um versus some things that um, you know, when, when somebody talks about a, a temporary traffic circle or a traffic circle, the measure that we're looking at is uh more of a, a mini or a small circle as opposed to a large roundabout type circle. So Ria, why don't you go ahead and take over from here?
Uh, thank you, Robert. Uh, and, and Robert said that, you know, uh, uh, we want to um, um, begin the discussion with uh previewing all the uh mitigation measures that we used for the um, for developing the um maps. So um we have used um, uh, measures like the temporary and uh permanent speed lumps, uh tunnel restriction signs, speed feedback signs, uh temporary and permanent uh traffic circles, um stripe medians and corner striping. And uh these measures, uh, you know, with the definitions and the traffic calming effects and drawbacks are explained more broadly in the project website. And all the general public had access to that before they uh provided their input in the interactive maps. Uh, so uh for some of the measures, like we have the temporary speed lump, the idea was to um have temporary speed lumps at locations where people desired um speed lumps and uh to test them out and see if they preferred them having there, if they receive any uh positive or negative responses. So as per the type of response that we receive, we'd either move them to another location for future testing or we would convert them into a permanent speed lump in the next phase. Uh, the same thing went with traffic circles where we just use um uh striping and delineators to create small traffic circles that will actually be not a problem for emergency vehicles who, who cross that intersection. And if uh people start liking them, then we'd convert them into permanent traffic circles. That will be again mountable by um emergency vehicles. Uh, we'd also proposed uh striped medians, which are basically just median islands that were striped. And in some cases, it just use uh delineators along with the striping. Um, again, the same idea, uh, just to restrict an intersection. And if people like them, um, then you know, maybe we could in the future have them in a more permanent state. Uh, so with that, um, I think we should move to the next uh few slides that will discuss all the near term, uh midterm and the long term measures that we proposed and uh types of responses that we received on them. Uh, so on the screen, uh, you can see we have two maps um side by side. And on the left, we have a map um that illustrates the proposed mediation measures. And uh when we sent out the surveys, as Robert mentioned, we received more than fifteen hundred responses from hundred and fourteen participants, which is um amazing. And the question were posed in terms of a near term, midterm and long term measures. And this is the same map that was sent out as far as the survey. And I'm sure you've had a chance to take the survey. And um, we were very excited to receive so many comments and did our best to consider them, you know, moving forward. Uh, so uh on the, on the right, we have the visual representation of the support received um through the survey. And um the responses that did not receive positive feedback are grade out. And other discolored responses include the neutral responses, which received um equal number of positive and negative responses. And there's another grade, grade out for no responses. Um, so at this point, uh, you know, we want you to know that although we proposed a whole bunch of measures, uh, knowing that not, sorry?
Keep going.
Uh, sorry, I was saying like, you know, uh, we proposed all these measures, you know, um, knowing that not everyone would be on board with all the measures, with all the locations. And uh one of the major examples is for the Lindonwood neighborhood. You know, we received a lot of comments on uh speeding and unsafe wa- walking and biking and uh other concerns in our previous outreach efforts. But the comments we received in regards to addressing those concerns with the proposed mitigation measures um were not received favorably. And you can see in the map, uh, like in the Lindonwood area, the measures are graded out because they did not receive positive feedback. Um, another example is the extended uh right turn restriction, uh, which is previously uh from seven thirty AM to uh nine thirty AM. And then it got recommended to seven AM to seven PM from Oak Grove Avenue to Middlefield Road. And um it has received an overwhelming number of negative responses, although it was previously supported a lot. Uh, so uh many participants in our previous outreach efforts um really pushed for uh turn restrictions um to El Camino and Camino Alago. But through the survey, it was very surprising for us to see that people were not at all in favor of those turn restrictions. And um considering everyone's concern, we tried to develop pilot measures starting with temporary speed lumps on Fairview, Montevista and Linda Vista. And it seems that the community is actually in favor of that. And we were really happy to see that the people wanted to see striped uh medians at intersections to slow down cars. And people were also very positive about pedestrian improvements throughout the uh town. And um uh overall measures like uh signal timing, uh coordination along Middlefield Road, uh pedestrian improvements near schools and intersections, um speed feedback signs on Selby, Stockbridge and Camino Alago received an overwhelming number of uh positive uh responses. And I think all the council members here today must have received a spreadsheet, you know, in which you can see a more detailed explanation on all these uh positive responses, especially the percentage support. positive responses, especially the percentage support. And we've also added a column with that labels additional comments. And there are some valuable comments provided by the community at specific locations. And we try to incorporate those comments as much as possible. And so you can, you can check them out and you'd see sometimes there are outliers like repeated comments. And we have considered them too while moving ahead. Next.
Do you?
So moving on.
Do you want to give a minute to someone, like if anyone has any questions on like, you know, near term mitigations, any issues or concerns or good fed, good feedback or anything?
Yes, absolutely.
I think we have a council member.
Mr. Bill? Sure. So of course, Robert, you, you know, some of my comments already. You know, we need to be looking forward as opposed to where we are or looking backwards and making these types of decisions. But, you know, especially with all the growth that's between Ensignal and Oak Grove inclusive and they're already starting to lease those properties now. But there, the police and, and, and Public Works had, you know, regularly, as you know, they look at the speed on the roads when we go ahead and re-verify twenty five miles an hour. So when we're talking about speed humps and things like that, have we've looked at what those numbers have been or are in the past? As well as where we're writing tickets from PD on what streets? And correlated that back to what just people want? Because, you know, I'm going through the document, you know, I've seen, for example, somebody wants a speed hump on, on Frederick, which is, has like six houses on it, so that you really can't get your speed up very much on that. You know, so have we, have we done that evaluation? Or would that be a follow on step? I mean, I've, I've got no issue with, with the recommendations. I'd like to add some things to the recommendations. But, but I think, I think we should move forward, I guess, is my, my point with getting these temporary speed humps and maybe putting some signs up and things like that. I, I, I support doing this, but, but I, I'd like to use a little more science in it and also then be future looking, as you know, I've, I've said that.
So I'm gonna, I'll try and answer some of that and then we'll get into some, I, I think that we may do a quick run on the next couple of slides and then move into the feedback that we got from the Transportation Committee. The first answer is we have not correlated these measures with ticketing data, et cetera. They were predominantly related to the, the concerns that were raised. And so I'll give the example, you mentioned Frederick. The reason why the measures were proposed, the speed lumps were proposed on Frederick were intended to minimize cut through or to reduce cut through through Lindenwood for those that would be avoiding the Ringwood Middlefield intersection and cutting through, taking Frederick and heading up towards Oak Grove where it might be a little easier to navigate going northbound. But the responses that we got from Linden, from Lindenwood folks was, no, please don't put those speed humps in.
Right.
And so the measures were proposed kind of on a couple of factors. One was related to speed, as you're indicating is an issue. The other was to try and mitigate some cut through. And a similar example would be the Linda Vista, Fairview and Montevista where, you say, back in the day when we had really heavy traffic on Alameda de Las Pogas with the stop sign at Atherton Avenue, it would not be uncommon for the cars going northbound in the evening to back up towards Camino Alago. And then there would be a few folks that would drive down Camino Alago, cut over on Linda Vista or Fairview and come back up on Atherton Ave to continue on, on Alameda de Las Pogas. And so that's kind of the thought process behind some of these. And so not necessarily that speeding is a major issue on those streets, but there is, there were cut through issues.
Okay, all right.
I have a question.
Yes.
Yeah. So that we don't can just continue debating one issue. In legend for the near term measures, there's a star and it says concept design, temporary structure. Could you explain what that is for me?
Sure. So there were a couple of areas where there was a, I'm going to apologize. I don't know if I'm sharing my screen or not.
Not anymore.
Here you are.
If you're on, if you're on your file.
So on, on our website, we did have these concept designs and there we go. So this here is Selby at Stockbridge where the intersection is rather wide and little disjointed. And so there is a concept of kind of tightening up the intersection a little bit with striping. And this was something that was available for viewing on the website for, for comment. I'll say that this is probably a little too tight, but it's just an idea that we could do something there. The other location was at
Fair Oaks. At Fair Oaks.
And Loiden. And so I'll pull that up right now as well.
These need to be vetted though, right, Robert?
They do need to be vetted. These were just ideas. They do need to be vetted. And so this here is kind of, again, kind of tweaking things a little bit. Maybe some additional striping on this side to better direct folks. The idea here being trying to improve visibility of the Loiden, Loiden Drive traffic to Fair Oaks. Following all of this, we did receive actually a couple of comments from the public separate from this effort to look at pedestrian access from Loiden Drive to the town center as well.
Yeah.
And so if we're going to look at this intersection, we would want to make sure that we included that in the effort as well.
Important. You know, actually, I have been, I think in like the Santa Cruz Aptos area, they've done a lot of this type of stuff in their mountainous little roads. And it's very, very effective. You know, the striping on the pavement kind of delineates where the vehicles really should be going and it slows everybody down and gives people a direction that where they really should be in their lane or whatever. So I, I think this is a, I, I, yeah, I think this concept has some merit.
I think we have a hand raised.
It'll help with Tesla's.
I don't see any.
Councilmember Hawkins, Monamalia, how's your answer?
I, I don't see her. Diana, go ahead.
Thank you. I have to unmute.
Okay, what I was going to ask is clearly the left hand turn on El Camino Real is probably the most dangerous thing in our city. There's been
Yep.
deaths there, et cetera. You asked the people, the only thing you gave us feedback on is asking them about prohibiting left hand turns during time slots. Was there any discussion of lights or the solution that we put in? I forgot what you call those, those lights that are on demand, like pedestrian.
The hawk beacons?
Oh, pedestrian lights.
Where people push it and then it makes flash.
Pedestrian light. It's a hawk beacon, but it's a pedestrian.
Did you ask on those things?
The pedestrian light.
Uh, we did not ask about the hawk beacons.
Or even a light, like those are the two obvious things to do to prevent what I would guess is the statistically most dangerous things that we have in the city. And I, I'm curious why that didn't happen. Is that because we don't put those in? Is there someone else or?
Diana, that's only for pedestrians. That's not, that doesn't help cars. I mean, it's, they're not activated by cars wanting to turn left.
Yeah, I understand that. But why would you not, if you're talking to people about safety measures on traffic? And the most dangerous thing we have in our city is people turning left on El Camino. You can put a light there or you can put a flashlight. And why, why was that not even a question? The only choice you gave them was restricting turns during certain time zones. So that's confusing to me. And then I second.
Have the hawk beacon.
At one spot. We have it at one spot. And that wasn't, correct me if I'm wrong, but that was in response to someone actually being killed there. And the second part, I want to go back to what Bill said, which is that maybe there should be some statistics here in terms of what are the actual most dangerous positions? And maybe that should be weighted in our decision. So maybe we're going to get to that. But it seems like we should have some real statistics as part of that.
So just with respect to having any kind of signals or pedestrian hawk signals, RRFBs on El Camino, we definitely have to get Caltrans involved. We, we cannot do it as a product city. And that's a pretty long process. The, the three or the two hawk signals or the RRFBs that you have on Caltrans facilities right now, they had a very big study that was done a long time ago. And now, now they're implementing it after, I, I guess it's, it's been three, four years ago that they had done the study. And now they have been implemented very recently in last year or so. So that's something that probably City would have to reach out to Caltrans and get them the data with respect to whether even you can have a light there or not. And they would have to conduct some signal warrants to see whether it warrants or not.
Well, I just want to make a point here that the left hand turns from the side streets onto El Camino. For, for instance, Watkins, we have prohibited that between four and six in the afternoon at peak traffic time. And that has helped, but it's still not great. And so the hawk beacons, the pedestrian activated beacons at Almond Roll, Isabella and Alejandra are pedestrian activated. And it does not help the left hand turn of a car. And, you know, Selby Lane is a death trap. Stockbridge is a death trap. Tuscaloosa is a death trap. You know, Alejandro is, and there have been.
El Camino is.
El Cami- yeah, because the cars go so fast because there are no signalized lights between Atherton Avenue and Ensignal. Our 1.6 miles of El Camino between Atherton Avenue and Ensignal, there are no traffic signals. There are the pedestrian activated beacons for pedestrians to cross. So if we're going to really try to make it safer for our residents to pull out from their side street and go left across six lanes of traffic practically, you know, there's got to be something else done. We've got to reduce the size of the roadway. So there's not, you know, six, five, five lanes to cross.
I agree. We need to, we need to relook at that again and, and talk about the bike lanes and pedestrian lanes and reduce it. We've, we've, we've lived with only two lanes due to all the construction on El Camino now anyway. So why don't, why not we, you know?
Yeah. I think that would be something that we really need to focus on in the coming year. Over and above what we're doing here.
Madam Mayor, if I could, one of the things that we ought to keep in mind is our goals here are not are multi, you know, that we have multiple goals here, one of which was to not impede the flow of traffic along the larger streets. Because the concern was that would lead to an increase in cut through traffic.
Right.
Yes, we have to remember that, thinking that through, you know, that, that if we, if we do something that causes backups on El Camino, the, the logical result will be traffic through the neighborhood streets.
And I am not advocating signalized lights. I'm just saying that we have to, I feel that we need to reduce the number of lanes on the, on El Camino and make more protected bike and pedestrian lanes. And that would slow the traffic down. That would make it a little easier to come into and out of El Camino, onto our streets.
Right.
You know? Otherwise.
Obviously, we don't need to raise our hands. So I'll just make the comments I've been.
Can't see anyone.
First of all, I think, I, I think this study is not focused on El Camino, but on the streets approaching El Camino.
Right.
Uh, and the neighborhood streets. And I have two kind of policy level comments. One is I don't consider any response to these issues to be overwhelming unless it's seventy five percent or more of respondents. So if we've got fifty five or sixty percent of respondents, I don't consider that to be overwhelming. I consider that to be interesting. And second, if I, I, I like some of the suggestions, the idea of the speed lumps, I think that initially we should only consider temporary speed lumps because we need the residents to see what it's like
Yeah.
before we make any of this permanent. And, but before we put in temporary, I think that we should have a notice go out to everyone that lives within a reasonable range. If we're looking at Fairview, Linda Vista and Montevista, I'd say everyone on those streets. If we're looking at Stockbridge and, and the other streets parallel to Stockbridge within some reasonable range, we should have a notice go out to everyone that lives in there saying, this is being considered. Are you in favor of it or not? So we have a judgment as to how many of those residents favor it. Now, and, and I say that as a policy judgment, because when we consider putting any kind of traffic restraint, and I'm generally in favor of Atherton implementing some traffic restraints, which we haven't done, but it, whenever we talk about implementing a traffic restraint on a block, for example, let's just take Fairview, there's going to be people interested in having restraints on that street that don't live on that street for whatever reason. And we know that. And I know Robert's seen this. But I'm particularly concerned about the people that live within the immediate proximity of where the restraint is suggested to be placed. And I want to get their specific feedback before we actually do it.
Can we finish the presentation, guys? Because I think we're, we're ahead of ourselves.
Uh, just a little bit, but I do want to say that I'd concur because particularly when we're going to be putting something in front, directly in front of somebody's house, we do want to make sure that they've bought into that measure. So I don't know if you want me to, if you want us to continue or there's still Councilmember Whitmer.
I think, Robert, we should continue because some of those questions get answered in the next slide, because this is just the near term. We do have midterm and long.
I, I think that just in the interest of time, I think rather than going through all of the near term, midterm and long term, we can just highlight a couple of differences here. And then move on to where we've received the feedback from the Transportation Committee, which probably would be a little more helpful. And so I'm going to take on these next couple before switching it back to, to Rhea, just to get through. So again, this is sim, in similar fashion to the previous one. The key ones to note here were the desire for some speed lumps on Watkins. They were more on the permanent side, but this is where we added a couple of the more expensive items, such as the traffic signal on Alameda de Las Pogas at Atherton Avenue. And then on the long term, the class two bike lanes along Stockbridge, Atherton Avenue and Selby, which requires roadway widening. Considering the expenses on roadway widening are not necessarily something that can be accomplished in the near term as well as the potential for traffic signals at Camino Alago at Alameda de Las Pogas and potentially at Fair Oaks and Middlefield. Alameda de Las Pulgas and potentially at Fair Oaks and Middlefield. And so going to Councilmember Whitmer's earlier comments, the additional considerations that we wanted to, to bring up or, you know, dealing with forward-looking items, um, you know, new and future development on our border. Some of the issues related to that is related to some of our shared streets that we have with our neighbors and trying to coordinate some of those measures with, with them as, as best as we can if we're proposing something on, um, on those shared routes. You know, additional measures to consider, um, like, like we've installed some uh, of our ALPRs at our entry points and on some of our major routes, whether we want to consider adding additional speed, speed feedback signs on some of those streets. We've gotten requests and want to look at potentially adding crossing improvements at Alameda de Las Pulgas and Stockbridge Avenue. And whether or not we want to consider additional stop signs in town. And those, if we were to look forward to them, require a warrant, warrant analysis before implementation. And so this here is kind of a chart of the feedback that we received on the near-term measures from the Transportation Committee. I'll highlight a couple of things and then I'll pass it on. The items with the red circles, though they may have received positive feedback from some of our residents, were not necessarily favored by the Transportation Committee. And those items included things that had a bit of striping or delineators such as the striped median islands or the painted temporary traffic circles. So as a blanket in reviewing the, the measures, that's something that generally that they were not in favor of. They were in favor of putting in those temporary speed lumps on several streets. In a, I'll call it a staggered fashion so that you start with, let's say, four or five installations. Let's say the three on Linda Vista, Fairview and Montevista. And after you get that feedback, you can take those and reuse them in another location, whether that be on Selby or, or Stockbridge. And the other items that they were in favor of were additional speed feedback signs and pedestrian improvements. And making sure that we recheck the timing of the signals on Middlefield, which we intend to do periodically. Ria, is there anything additional on this slide to cover?
I know, I think you covered most of it. With addition of like, as you said, like for the uh, speed lumps, like we either propose, like when we propose the temporary speed lumps, we either, you know, move the location if people have negative responses, like, you know, if they don't want them from their houses. Or if they have positive responses, you know, we move them on to becoming more permanent in the next phases. And on the streets of the, of Montevista, Linda Vista and Fairview, like how the Transportation Committee suggested that instead of having like a pair of speed lumps, we start with one speed lump and see how, you know, the response we receive from the community. And then, you know, add another maybe in the future. Uh, other than that, I think the committee also recommended that we move the temporary speed lumps that we proposed on Watkins to the next phase, the midterm phase, instead of having, having them on the, on the near term phase. And they also provided some additional recommendations for the, the concept design on, on Lloyd and Carol. And I sort of look into having more like pedestrian facility at Stockbridge and Alameda.
Robert, I don't think there's a member of the Transportation Committee here. Could, can I give sort of what I took from the meetings? If, if that's helpful. Because I think it goes to what Rick was saying in part that I, I think there's a great deal of focus on, on the concern about unintended consequences. And, and the, the concern that if we did something, it may make things worse somewhere else. So the thought was, let's do things that can be, that we can learn from as a town. So speed lumps were the most obvious example. We can put them down. Um, and, and the, if we're going to do that, we really should be working with the local, you know, the immediate neighbors to make sure they understand what they're getting and they're supporting what they're getting. And, and spend our time learning from it. I think that was the, my main thing. They did also focus on schools as a particular area of, of emphasis. But the general rule I took from them was, you know, concern about cut back traffic, but let's cut through traffic, but let's make very, let's be thoughtful and make sure we're not making things worse because there's high potential to accidentally make things worse.
Thank you. So, um, I, if I could just make a comment and kind of wrap things up a little bit. I really, really appreciate the input from the Transportation Committee. I think that that was very well thought out as a potential near-term kind of trial balloon basis, you know, that, uh, you know, the temporary speed humps, lumps are, are not, they, they can be easily removed. Paint on the pavement can be easily painted over. The, I, I think that, you know, we can always get more data analysis and information, but you know, I, I think that we're never going to have all of the information that we maybe want for every decision. Uh, I think that we've been working on this for, you know, two years, uh, very actively with the residents in, um, I guess if I counted up how many actual installations, I guess, uh, that the Transportation Committee is recommending. It's probably less than a dozen, uh, with recommending more information and additional recommendation for the uh, temporary structure, the concept design thing. But if, if staff is looking for direction on uh, how to proceed, I think we need to start somewhere and, 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 you know, it can always be modified, but I, I think that we, I would like to see us take some action. And see how it goes. And it's not going to be perfect first time out, but I think a lot of thought has already gone into this. So I'd like to have, you know, maybe Mike's opinion on that. Other council member, I guess, Mr. Whitmer's raising his hand. I, I don't see everybody else, so I'll just open it up at that point. Mike, you want to?
Yeah, I, 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 I agree with you, Elizabeth. I think we should, we should do something and learn from it and, and be prepared to acknowledge if we've made mistakes or whatever. The other thing I think we need to do as a council is think hard about what our goals are. What are we going to measure this against? What are we trying to accomplish? But I, I do think we spent a lot of time talking about it and, and we, I think should, should start to do things and, and again, be flexible, prepared to learn from them.
Right, especially, I mean, if we're going to notify these residents, right? That before we put in this temporary speed lump, that we're going to do this. And it has come from outreach and what do you think about it?
Yeah.
Right? So.
So I'm sorry, and I know Bill wants to talk about it. So for me, the takeaway is I'm almost less concerned as exactly where we do that, so long as you don't do it somewhere crazy. And, and more with the fact that we do it in a, in a good way and we learn from it. And, and then we can apply those lessons elsewhere.
Yeah.
Okay, one thing that we need to remember is also not forget about before and after studies. Once you, before you implement it, we should really have a good data for the before conditions. And after you implement, we should have really good data for after conditions. Because that, that would exactly show the community whether it's worked for them or not, because perception is different from data.
Exactly, you're so right. Yeah. Well, and we're in a different environment now. I mean, a lot of this started pre-pandemic and then we went through the pandemic and now we're kind of reopening. And I've got to tell you, I don't know what's going on with Valparaiso, but it is like gridlock two or three times a day, going in and out of Menlo Park and to El Camino. But anyway, so.
Forgotten how to drive, to be honest.
Bill, I've lost you on my screen, so I don't know, I can't see.
I'm still, I'm still here.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so I, I spoke to Mike about this. You know, some of the data was lost, you know, I think on, uh, let's see, on page eighty-one, you know, there, there was a request and it didn't get considered. It, it talked about putting a speed lump on Glenwood and, and some other things. They had like three or four things listed. And it had a rating that was higher than these places that they're, they're considering. So I think that I, I'm in favor of doing this. I think it's important that we do things that's visible to the community, so they know we're doing it. But I do think that, that, that one area, plus there was nothing for Ensignal. And that's where we have young children riding bikes, walking in the streets. Yes, there are, there are guards there. But you know, the, the little kids on the, on the bikes, I've seen them falling over, you know, and fortunately, traffic is stopping to help them. Uh, you know, I think Ensignal needs some attention as well. And so even though no one put any input in, I think that these two, couple of streets, especially looking forward to the construction that's going on and the number of families that are going to be moving into those, those structures that are, you know, where the Beltramo site was and in the Greenheart area. I think that we ought to consider adding to what the request was and putting in a, you know, a speed hump. But I do think this is a positive step forward. But the key thing is the community needs to see we're doing something because we've just been talking about it for a long time. And so I'm a hundred percent in favor of it. And as I said, I spoke with Mike about these two changes and pointed out the, the error that didn't get carried forward uh, with a 69% rating. Uh, and so, um, anyway, so I, I, I'm in favor of moving forward and, and spending the, spending the money to do this. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, let's, let's ask Diana, I don't see you, but if you have something to say.
Yeah, I could do. Uh, I, I think I am in favor of doing the speed bumps. I think in this presentation, we would have all benefited by a summary slide that kind of summarized, well, here's the summary of where the places are. Because it's really hard to understand, looking at this chart that you have up on the screen here, where these speed pumps are going to go, where's the order of priority? The other thing that surprises me is that we don't also overlay on that, that decision actual car accidents and statistics and real problems from the police department. It's, it looks to me on the surface, and again, I'm new here, so maybe there's a history to this, I don't know. But I would not make a traffic decision based solely on consumer input. I would also add a correlation of, or prioritize those things based on where there's been accidents, where there's been problems, where there's been congestion, and I don't see that here. So that troubles me. Maybe you've had that before, but it troubles me that those two elements that are statistical should be combined in how we decide where to spend our money.
Good point.
I haven't done that before. So maybe Robert, if you can share that.
One more time? Are you talking about the long-term traffic management?
Also, also the collision data and stuff.
I, I can jump in a little bit. Diana, I think you'd be relieved to learn the town has, has a really very, very good traffic safety record. The number of, of accidents we have is, is quite small, almost statistically insignificant. Even going back five years or longer at each, at each intersection.
But there have been deaths on El Camino. I, I've read about those in the Almanac. And the other thing I don't really see rising to the surface, like if you live here as a resident, the things that rise in your daily experience, like the school that's over there and the traffic that gets hit and it hits on on Atherton Ave and Alameda de Las Pulgas, that's been like a huge, long-term congestion issue. And I don't, I, I may be not understanding this chart because it's microscopic for one, but that, there's not even been a discussion of that that I heard. So a- again, I would, I would do better if I had a summary of what this is saying and understanding a little bit more how that, how what the citizens said versus what the accidents say versus where our known congestion points are. And that should at least prioritize where we put speed bumps, where, you know, where we put our dollars. That's, that's all I'm saying. And that doesn't come out in this presentation, but maybe historically it has.
It would really help if we can also share the Alameda de Las Pulgas report with her, because I think that has a lot of information.
We, we can do that.
Yeah, we can also share the collision history with her. And we did some OD surveys, maybe that also could help her. But yes, you are right, Diana, that there, there has been a lot of small, small studies that we have done over these two years, probably, you know, since you were not a part of it. So you, you feel that there is some, there are some holes that need to be filled out here. But we, we can, we can send you all those backups for your review.
I, I think that you should summarize it, we shouldn't summarize.
We have summarized it, they are separate reports altogether. So all those reports have led to the study. That's, that's the issue.
Right, all right, I'm sorry to be argumentative, but this is, this is a study on consumer input to the problem. We must also, as a council, decide not only on consumer input, but on those other studies. So I would like to see a summary of an educated person, not me, who looks at all those things and said, here's our priority spot. So I was thinking there'd be one more slide that would say, based on these three things, what the consumers think, what the accidents say, what the congestion says, these are our priority hotspots of where to put our money. That's what I would like to see.
So fortunately, unfortunately, what happened was that the technical part went first and the consumer part came towards the end. We had a lot of technical studies, but no input from the community. So this project was only, only for getting that input from the community for all the technical stuff that was done previously.
Got it, so will someone then come back?
Hold on, hold on, hold on. So I just want to kind of summarize, but Diana, so I think that what, what we're seeing here is kind of a combination of, you know, the information that the consultants received or did with the technical data combined with the input from the residents. This isn't just a completely resident-led, even though all their charts kind of said residents did this and this. But in the compilation of it, that's what I, I, I look, looked at it as.
So have we prioritized where we're going to put our dollars and what are the hot spots combined by those three data points?
So, uh, let me, let me try and answer that to a degree. Um, we look, looked at this kind of in a phased approach and as noted, some were short-term, some were medium-term and some were long-term. I'll tell you that probably the biggest hotspot um, that we had pre-COVID was the Atherton Avenue, Alameda de Las Pulgas intersection. That is a big hotspot. It's got a lot of things associated with it, but it's not a low-hanging fruit. Meaning that the costs associated with it don't make it such that we can just turn around and do it. And so we understand that that's a need and that's why that was put in because of, primarily because of its cost as a midterm item.
Ending a stoplight there, and I don't know that anybody wants a stoplight there.
Well, that, I was going to say, that was part of this effort was to get that feedback. And so what we have on the near term, honestly, are a bunch of low-hanging fruit.
Robert, just to make sure we're clear, the Alameda de Las Pulgas traffic safety improvements were actually part of the grant request on the community funding that the town submitted for Congresswoman Anna Schu. That's part on, that's on the federal docket as part of that big dollar.
1.3 million dollars. So we can make some improvements along Alameda de Las Pulgas. Uh, and, uh, you know, we've run the gamut of discussing large roundabouts, right? To kind of keep traffic flowing and not have it stop, stop, you know, you go, I go. I, you know, seeing that stoplight there is a little shocking to me.
And so going back, so in. Um, and so going back, so in terms of the priority, you say that the low-hanging fruit, fruit items and the more immediate impact items are not high-dollar cost items.
Yeah.
Okay, and so I understand the concern about making sure that we spend our money appropriately. And the recommendation is like, as indicated, is that before putting down asphalt, we're going to buy some temporary speed lumps that we can, in essence, use as a pilot to make sure that things work, that they're working as intended, that they're having the proper, um, benefits with limited drawbacks. Um, and so we would not go forward in putting in the asphalt until after we piloted it. And that device being reusable, we can take it. If it, if it works, great, we take it out, we put in asphalt, we'll just move it over to another location. If it doesn't work, we're able to take that device and move it someplace else to test it out. Um, which we believe is very cost-effective in its ability to be able to be moved, et cetera. Um, the speed feedback signs is, I'm gonna say, we've had a program over the last several years to install these things. Um, and there is some beneficial effect to them. And, um, we do program them and we believe that there's value in them in terms of reminding folks about their speed and encouraging them to slow down. And so again, they're, they're not super expensive. They're probably in the neighborhood of five to seven thousand apiece. Um, and if, you know, the locations are, you know, we, we can easily move those as well. Um, so the other item that, I guess, one thing that I'd like to get some feedback on is, um, that stripe median concept that we showed earlier.
Mm-hmm.
Um, striping again, isn't a high-dollar amount item, and we can put it down with paint as a test as opposed to thermoplastic, so that it can be either painted over or it'll fade away over time. But, um, the Transportation Committee wasn't necessarily in favor of that concept.
Oh, hmm, hmm. I think it's a low-cost, low-cost probe and, you know, I, anyway. Well, I appreciate.
I don't even remember, Elizabeth, what the conversation was there. So I don't think it was, Robert, can you remind me? Did it get a lot of attention? I don't even recall the conversation.
I'm gonna say that they thought that it was a little intrusive and took away from the rural feel more than anything else.
Yeah, but.
And so they thought the, the idea of less striping is, um, they, they were, they were not in favor of adding too much in terms of striping.
I used to feel that way, but then when we started doing the bike lanes and striping, it just made everything feel safer all around. But, uh, but I agree, you know, the rural, and we're not calling for them everywhere.
Um, we had them on some, uh, of our major streets at particular intersections, such as on Atherton Avenue. And I think on, um,
So, Robert, let me, let me interrupt you. I, I think, um, Mr. De Goya would like to, I, I don't see hands raised. Good. Um, he's, he just texted me that he's had his hand up for thirty minutes. And so I really apologize, Mr. De Goya, for not calling on you. It's your turn.
No problem. I mean, the conversation kind of has gone past what I was focused on. What, what I thought was, you know, uh, Diana raised some very valid questions about community versus police input and trying to coordinate all of that data. And I, I think we've gotten, um, a good deal of information from the public that is, has initiated this and these suggestions are all good. My, my feeling is that the next thing we need is a specific suggestion from staff about which kinds of, um, traffic management devices we should test. And maybe we should identify a half a dozen of these different, uh, suggestions, maybe, maybe ten. I don't know what the right number is. But, uh, that should come to the council and then we should go to the people who live near where those implementations should be done. And we should get their, at least send them the notice so they can respond. And if they don't respond, they don't respond. But I don't want to just, on my own, as a council member, decide that we should go put speed humps on, and, and I understand they're temporary, on Fairview or Watkins. I support doing both of that. From my perspective, that makes lots of sense. I think we have problems with, with the streets that, every single one of the streets that have been identified, we have issues with. But we need to get the local input and as a council, we need to sort of focus on a reasonable number of, uh, devices that we're gonna go out there and implement.
Well, certainly, we, we would not, uh, it, it would be a rolled-out program, you know, and, and I, I agree with you wholeheartedly. Okay, Mr. Widmer, you've been patient. Thank you very much.
Uh, the, the, the question that Robert asked, um, I'm in favor of doing striping. Uh, our former police chief, uh, Chief Flint, uh, very accurately indicated that speeds decrease when you narrow the road.
Right.
And so, and you're putting the lines on these, some of these major streets that we have, or these cut-through streets with, that are heavily congested or where speeding is happening, I think would have, you know, first off, it would, it would help the bicyclists and the pedestrians, but secondly, it will slow the cars down.
Yeah.
So people like to drive between the lines and so.
Yeah. I think we're kind of getting to some consensus here about, you know, uh, taking, um, baby steps and, uh, you know, low-cost probe. And I think that we have, uh, identified, maybe, I guess, maybe a next step might be, if I could just, uh, offer, uh, a next step for maybe, I don't know if we could put it on our October agenda or not, uh, if staff could come back, uh, to us with, say, a half a dozen, um, you know, uh, projects uh, that they feel would be the biggest bang for our buck. Uh, and then we could look at that and, and make a decision and then begin to notify residents and then, you know, start that process. Does that make sense? Mike?
Yes, I think that, uh,
I think that makes a lot of sense. My only concern, I'm sorry, Robert, my only concern is, is you use the word notify residents. We should think about whether we're notifying residents or asking residents.
Oh, oh, yes, my, excuse me. Yeah, that was my wrong nomenclature. I, I meant, you know, letting them know and asking their opinion about it.
Because that six may turn to one pretty quickly if, if, you know, if the neighbors don't want them.
I, I understand now that Councilmember Hawkins, uh, has her hand up and wants to make a comment. Diana, I'm so sorry. I didn't see you.
I agree with that, what everyone said so far, and I'm in favor of the speed bumps. Where I'm kind of getting lost is how unscientific it feels about how we're picking them. If you're gonna put a speed bump on the big through streets, we have traffic lights on them now. We should have data on which ones are the worst ones, like our, I know on Stockbridge, there's a speed, there occasionally is a street light. There must be data, so we should be picking them based on data, not just on which ones we think. I'd feel better if someone, if we got the report back, like everyone's requesting. I agree with everything everyone said. But I'd feel better that report back said, we're proposing that it go on Stockbridge because we put our, uh, speed light up and we have X percentage of speeding on this versus this street versus this street and do it a little more scientifically than it feels like we're doing. So forgive me if I'm wrong on how we're doing it, but, um, that's, that's one little added thing I'd like to see to the, the, uh, report back.
Um, I guess I, I, I've, I've been on council and, uh, so long that, um, Stockbridge, uh, there has been a resident that would come to every council meeting with his wife and every transportation committee meeting with his wife. And Mr. Lumphrest is nodding. You remember who he was? And would just rail at us about the speeding on Stockbridge. And so, I mean, it's, that was not, so we would, anyway, you know, police would go and sit there, vacant cars out there for a while to try to, you know, deter. But it is a long, beautiful street. So anyway, I agree with you. Uh, Mr. Avalia, can we, uh, talk about, oh, city manager, yes.
Uh, just, just for a little bit of background. The, the concepts of where speed, speed lumps would go and what some of challenged locations are and where stop sign recommendations are, that we presented to entity as part of this outreach effort, were not created in a vacuum. We had traffic data, we had input from the police, we had numerous transportation committee meetings where we heard complaints and heard issues from the community that were raised, much as that, you know, speeder on Stockbridge complaint, that was a continuing thing. Those fed the placement of radar trailers that the police put out and traffic enforcement measures along Stockbridge and Selby and Polemas, uh, for the cut-through traffic along Linda Vista and Mona Vista. So we have all of that data. That informed the initial map that we sent out to the community about, hey, what about a speed lump in this location? Or what about more enforcement in that location? That's where those came from, is that data and analysis over the past few years. Uh, so that, so staff can put together a narrowed list of, here's where we're gonna start and bring it to the next meeting. But I don't want to get into a situation where we're rehashing and reanalyzing all this data again and changing it around, uh, based on current concept or perceptions of particular issues, because it, it was empirically developed over time.
Yeah, but it was on two thousand eighteen data.
Not all of the data. We, I mean, we have police reports out there all the time that are informing this, as well as complaints.
I'm not gonna debate it with you, George.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
So with respect to.
I just want to add something, um, quickly. So, uh, all the reports and some of the existing data is shared with the public on the project website, where we have, um, shared like, um, average daily traffic and collision history, um, congestion and A5 percentile speed. So if any of the, you know, council members, if you'd wish to look at it, then that would also be great.
So Ria, would you just tell us exactly what, where to go on the website? Is it the city website, ci dot Atherton? And it's a traffic management?
Uh, it's, it's on the project website, um, www dot Athertontrafficmanagement dot com. I'll share it. Yes.
You can copy paste it on the chat. They can just click on it. That way it's easy for them to go to it. Um, but, um, Robert and George, uh, I, I would like to add something to this study because, you know, this, this study was only meant to outreach the community. Um, and I, I just want to make sure that, you know, that is kept in mind and we're not, uh, later on getting into, like, I, I do not want to agree on something that is not within the scope. Um, and, you know, all, although, all that part was done previously. And George, I completely agree with you that it's, it's a buildup on, of all these other studies that we have been doing for two years. So the, and also to wrap this up, or we, we, I know that city will implement in phases and there are steps that need to go before we implement that and which are a part of traffic calming program where, you know, you reach out to the community, you exactly talk to those people who are going to get directly impacted. But we need to, we need to have kind of a, a face document that this is what we're going to do to start with in, in year one to three. And this is what we're going to do in year five, and this is what we're going to do in year ten. And that's, that's kind of input that we want from you. I'm not saying that you would do hundred percent of it. You might do eighty percent, you might do fifty percent, but, but just focusing on wrapping this up, we need to have that, that step approached in a document that this is what we have agreed to and that's what we're looking at, um, consent from you that, is this the path we want to move forward with? And, and then what are the, what are the other parts in between? That's something that probably, you know, Robert would have to take it, that, okay, this is my first phase. I'm going to reach out to this community, these people who live on this, this particular corridor. Do you agree with it and do you not agree with it? And there will be a follow-up report to that. But with, with respect to this particular study, I think we need that list put together so you know what to do in years to come. I, I'm, I'm sorry, but that was the intent, uh, just wanted to kind of say it out loud.
I think that's a good summary. And I think that's a reasonable approach, actually. It gives us a little bit of a, not a pun, a roadmap.
Right.
Okay. So George, what, what do we do now?
Well, I, I think, uh, we were looking for that direction. And if I could summarize that, the council's looking for a near-term list of projects that Public Works would look to implement over the next six months to a year. We'd have to add budget for that in this fiscal year's budget to bring back to the council for their blessing to move forward on.
Okay. That seems, well, I, that seems reasonable to me.
Um, city manager and mayor, with your permission, I just want to double check if we took public comment. I know we had a few members join, but I'm not sure if they indicated they'd like to make a comment.
What a, what a, what a, what a good, uh, suggestion. So are there any members of the public here with us tonight that would like to, uh, uh, quickly speak? You like the direction that we're going in after we've talked around and round about it?
And I, I don't see any hands raised. Just as a reminder, if you're joining by link, you can click participants or by phone, dial star nine. I don't see any mayor, but thank you.
Okay.
Stop the screen share.
Yeah, Robert, can you? Let's do that. There we go.
There we go. Okay. Well, here's everyone. Uh, so nice to see everybody.
We do have somebody with a hand raised.
Okay.
That's Councilmember De Goya has his hand up.
Yes, hi. I don't remember.
Uh, yes. I, I think George's summary is a good summary. I think that we don't need a more detailed summary of middle and long-term uh, goals at this point, because I think what comes out of what we begin to implement, and, and I think, I, just to repeat, I think what George suggested is the right approach. I think coming out of that, we're going to have a much better analysis of what we want in the short and long term. We haven't done this before. We've been trying to get residents to pay attention to traffic calming devices. Well, as long as I've been on the council. And, uh, and, and dealing with traffic calming devices on our residential streets is a dramatically different issue than dealing with El Camino Real. So, uh, I, I'm glad that we're starting to do this. And, and I, I think we need to see what comes out of it before we spend a lot of money to figure out what should be in the middle or long term.
Agreed. Okay. All right. Well, um, so let me go back to our, if, if that's, that's, uh, everyone's comments and no public comments, I'm gonna close this, uh, item. Staff has direction and, um, we will, uh, go to item number seven. Are there any council reports or comments? We had the one, uh, council report, uh, we talked about. And then item number eight, we'll just adjourn our meeting. Oh, Rick, okay, you're muted.
Sorry, I, I'll give a quick report. Um, Peninsula Clean Energy had its annual board retreat this month, uh, which was a very big meeting, uh, because everything's virtual. We get a, we, we basically get unanimous attendance of the twenty-three board members. And, uh, the meeting dealt with the two principal priorities, strategic priorities that Peninsula Clean Energy has identified. Uh, and I think the council should be aware of those, because I, I, I do think they're quite important. Uh, the first, uh, strategic priority is to provide electricity to our three hundred thousand San Mateo County and Los Manos customers on a twenty-four, seven-time coincident basis. And I want to explain it because this is actually a dramatic goal for Peninsula Clean Energy to establish. There is no other load-serving entity in the world that we're aware of that has established this goal. The, there are a few companies that have established a similar goal, Google being the most leading. And Google's goal is to achieve this goal by 2030. And Peninsula Clean Energy's goal is to achieve this for our 300,000 customers by 2025.
Wow.
So this is a really big deal. And what it means is the Peninsula Clean Energy will be purchasing or delivering clean energy every hour of the day that when our customers demand it, when they turn on their lights or use whatever devices that consumes electricity, we will provide them with clean electricity. Today, Peninsula Clean Energy and many other load serving entities provide 100% clean energy on an annual basis. And what that means is that we overproduce clean energy when the sun shines and the wind blows. And when there is no sun shining and no saved stored energy, we buy brown energy, which is called system energy. It's basically in California, natural gas. In other states, it would be more coal. But in California, it's natural gas generated energy. We buy that basically from the hours of 7:00 PM to 11:00 AM. When energy isn't as greatly demanded during that time as it is during the day. But we overproduce in the day and we over, and we, and the overproduction, we send back to the grid. So we're, we're, we're selling back to the grid, clean energy in excess of what we consume when it is available. And when it's not available, we buy the brown energy. Our goal is to change that. And to buy 100% clean energy, 100% of the time during the day when our customers demand it. We don't know how to get there, but we are in the process and we are spending a lot of money to figure out how to get there. We've got a very significant staff doing that analysis. I'm proud of it. But I just want you to be aware, this is a really big deal. And this is an organization that we are part and parcel of. The second goal that Peninsula Clean Energy has is to enable San Mateo County and Los Manos to, to decarbonize. That is to generate zero carbon emissions by, what the goal, the proposed goal was 2045. And there were people on the call that insisted that we consider moving that to 2035, which we agreed to do. We don't know how to get there by 2045. That, but this is our second goal is to enable San Mateo County to get to zero emissions of ba- basically be zero net energy by 2035. This is a goal that Gavin Newsom apparently is considering mandating for the state of California. The reality is we don't have any idea about how to get there by 2045, let alone 2035. And the real issue is that Peninsula Clean Energy can control the first goal. We buy energy and we deliver it. If we can buy clean energy, we can, and that becomes available on a 24-hour basis to the extent of our customer need, we can deliver it. We can't control decarbonization. That's something that city councils in the state of California has to control. But, but we can help influence and we'll spend money to do that. So those are the two goals. Those were very big discussions that we had that were engaged by many, many members of the board. And I'm happy to go over more of that as, as we go forward.
Rick, that's really very exciting news. And I just want to confirm, you're, are you still the chair of this board? So, and when does that, does that just continue into next year?
Uh, it's, it, it, you're elected for a year, just like our mayors and vice mares. And, uh, and yeah, so it, it's a February to February time period and there's a term limit of three years.
Nice work. Very nice work. Thank you for the report. Yay. It's very good. All right. With that, I'd like to
Motion to adjourn.
Get a motion to adjourn and say goodbye. And thank you very much, Vice Mayor Lempres, for your service.